Six thirty P M. Um, good afternoon and welcome to the uh. The zoning commission meeting on March fourth of two thousand and twenty, I mean, twenty twenty-five uh starts at six thirty P M. I want to have a roll call. Make sure we have a corn present.
Commissioner Mohica.
Present.
Commissioner Bengochea.
Present.
Commissioner McCormick.
Present.
Chairman Solis.
Present.
Commissioner Jackson.
Present.
Having a corn ready, we'll go ahead and move into the next item of of action. Uh, before we get to the consent agenda, I do want to, I do want to acknowledge uh the fact that today uh will be the last meeting that for the zoning commission with our city manager, Ryan. And Ryan, I I just want to thank you for the work that you've done with us. Um, I appreciate what you've done, not only with us, but also with the city. When I look at my streets, I can drive Castle Hills, it's a lot smoother than where it was four to five years ago. And I know in your street plan, how many streets are left for us? How many streets did you do and how many are left today to get done?
I'd probably say there was twenty-four reconstructed streets, two more left, which is Mr. McCormick's street, so he can't say the same thing right now, but he will in eight months. Um, so there's only two reconstructed streets left. Um, and we started it, there was a, I think fifty percent of the streets were in the reconstruction category and that basically completes the reconstruction category when Carrollwood and North Manson are done and Mr. Small's street as well.
And you've done mine, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, and then um probably, I think thirty-three, thirty-four streets that were done through micro surface, the maintenance each year uh over those six years, so.
So I appreciate the legacy you've done for Castle Hills, right? I I think when we all can agree that the opportunity was there uh for us to grow, the opportunity was there to be able to take it to the next level of Castle Hills. So thankful for the mayor and the council for hiring you in the first place. Uh, but we're sad to see that the city of Garden Ridge is now going to be able to inherit your talents. And so congratulations to them. And I'm going to leave it open to a couple of my commissioners here if they'd like to say something. Uh, also in reference to the work that Ryan has been able to provide. As for me, I get my weekly phone call before the meeting. I get my briefing, we get to debate what exactly will happen or not happen. Uh, and I've always enjoyed that conversation, so I just want to say thank you once again, Ryan. Anybody else? Just.
Sure, I got something to say. I think Ryan has done a wonderful job for the city while he's been here. We were very fortunate to to be able to uh to get him to come to work for us and to get him to be able to stay for this length of time. I'm very pleased with the work that he's done. I think uh, what is it, Garden View?
Garden Ridge.
Garden Ridge is getting a heck of a guy, so good luck to you, Ryan. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree. It's just felt like everything's, there's been a lot of energy in our city since you've been our city manager, so I appreciate that. It really feels like you put us on a great path, so thank you for your work.
Thank you. Appreciate working with you.
So then let's get into action, my friends. Uh, and we have citizens to be heard, and today we have citizens to be heard. Uh, our first one is Brenda Jackson. Brenda, please come forward. You have a comment in reference to the project uh the rezoning near U S or somebody put right there, but we know where it's at, West Avenue.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to comment, I got the letter from you all about the zoning commission meeting tonight.
Ms. Jackson, before you start, would you just give us your name, your address?
Oh, okay. It's Brenda Jackson at three oh seven Zornia Drive. And um, my husband and I have lived in our home for forty-six years, but we've been residents of Castle Hills longer than that, so um. My my question was, and it may be addressed in some of the other information that goes on. Um, in this part of Castle Hills, it's it's been very quiet. We've raised our two sons here. Uh, we actually have one of our younger sons, his family and a lot of their friends are actually moving back in to Castle Hills because they consider it a safe, quiet neighborhood. Neighbors, yards, trees can get out and walk around and they just love it. And um I guess my question is, I don't understand what the difference between a zoning eighth and a zoning two is, and I'd like some information about that, and if if that involves a lot of rebuilding and and everything. Um, my concern is the quiet area, traffic obstruction, and I guess the major two things are is trees going to be cut down? One of the things that we, all of our neighbors love is our large yards, it's quiet, we have trees, we can actually look outside and see trees and plants. Deer wander through. And also the water situation with the creek bed that runs through that property. Uh, yes, we're in the middle of a drought, but when we do get rain, it floods, so those are some of the things I have questions about with the rezoning to to, because my understanding is that that brings in more housing in a cluster in a small area, so.
So we will ask the same questions you have. Um, this is just public comment, right? So you're able, but however, when we do do the actual case, when we're asking our questions, it's still public opportunity for you to come back and say, I heard this, this is my official concern. So thank you very much for your opening comments. Uh, and we'll move on, but please don't leave because uh, once we open the public hearing, then you can come back up and speak once again with a greater question.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir. Fred Zyga. Yes, sir. Name and address, sir.
Name is Felix Ziga.
Ziga.
Uh, I'm the property owner at homeowner at sixty-five zero eight West Avenue. Um, I wrote a letter of support for this project. I just wanted to read it into the record. Um, shouldn't take more than a couple of minutes. Um, I fully support Mrs. Cobb's rezoning request to allow for higher density residential. The adopted comprehensive final comprehensive plan final published by the city of Castle Hills in March of twenty twenty-three identifies all properties along the east side of West Avenue in the stretch between Loop four ten and Northwest Military as potential for flex use, commercial, mixed use, office, multifamily. As an architect and neighbor, I believe Mrs. Cobb's request meets the spirit of the comprehensive plan as it allows for multifamily. If anything, if anything, her proposal is less dense than traditional multifamily, given its um garden garden style homes. This is also consistent with the higher intensity of use already present along much of West Avenue, including the retail center at the intersection of West Avenue and Loop four ten, Fink Cigar, the old filling station office at sixty-two oh two West Avenue, the accounting office building at sixty-two oh two West Avenue, the large A T and T building, Aggie Park Complex and Antonian High School. Then the these are only the commercial uses directly to the south of the property. Of course, there's other ones to the north. Um. There are also several properties to the north, including a small house and warehouse at sixty-eight oh four West Avenue being used as a contractor's office, West Oak Subdivision across the street, which is garden homes, the multifamily property with multiple dwellings at sixty-eight oh three West Avenue, the previous Sergio Salon Office Building, now Nova Group, um sixty-eight oh eight West Avenue, the Mosaic Oaks, Office Park sixty-eight ten, sixty-eight twelve West Avenue, and the St. George Complex and C V S. Um, more housing and more jobs is the only way for Castle Hills to move forward and continue growing our tax base. Thank you.
Thank you. And when you read the comprehensive plan, just to make sure, you said uh the comprehensive plan states that it has the potential for that utilization, correct?
Correct.
Potential is a big word. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. In a second, you'll be able to come forward. Yes, ma'am. Not a problem. David Lewis. Been awhile.
I'm gonna end up doing a presentation.
Okay, not a problem. Mr. Villegas.
Good evening. My name is Justin Villegas. I'm at one oh three Cremaria, and I would like to come up after the presentation.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Elena, the same thing? No problem. And ma'am, do you want to speak now or after the presentation? So everybody has a the the presentation should give you a level set in field of what exactly they're asking for, and then we encourage you to come forward after that. Yeah. But you're more than welcome to come forward right now. It's always an option.
Okay. I am opposed to the project because it will definitely change the character of the neighborhood. The garden homes across West Avenue were built on a large, open space. Any of these more dense housing in Castle Hills was built in a large, open area, was not built with other houses as neighbors. Uh, that's a huge change to that neighborhood, and all of the items cited by the previous gentleman were are on West Avenue or they're commercial properties. We don't have any commercial properties on Cremaria. And I personally do not want to have a dense, densely populated area that's built on what's now one residential lot on Cremaria.
Thank you.
An inappropriate change.
And 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 I said it, and I'll say it again, that in the, after the presentation, if you feel more in tune.
Okay.
Come on back. But anyway, there's nobody else on the list that we have, so at this point, I will close the citizens' comments and move on to, and it's at six forty. Yes, ma'am. Oh, we have two comments. You want to read them now. One more.
I received an email this afternoon from Luke Harris at three oh six Caladium. I am writing in concern of a beautiful, single-family lot at one oh two Cremaria being turned into a tiny home park. I believe the zoning commission's job is to protect the beauty of Castle Hills. This proposal appears to turn one or two lots into six lots. The owner could build a beautiful home in the next lot over, but instead wants to carve the parcel into extremely small lots that would most likely eliminate a lot of foliage, trees, and beauty. I understand the need for increased revenue, but what if everyone in the neighborhood started dividing their acre lots into six micro properties to live the landlord dream? Let's keep Castle Hills peaceful and beautiful. Thank you for your time, Luke.
And the name again?
Luke Harris at three oh six Caladium.
Thank you. So this will close the the citizens' comments, which is the first part of our agenda, item number two. At this point, we'll move to the consent agenda, so I'll take a motion for approving the consent agenda from our last meeting, November sixth of twenty twenty-four. I'll need a motion. I have a motion in a second. Without, thank you, with the, we have a motion in a second, no discussion, no discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We'll now move into section four, one, four point one, the business uh public hearing on a request from Suzanne Cobb for rezoning a property located at six five one five West Avenue and one oh two Chimera Drive, Castle Hills, Texas, seven eight two one three. More particularly described as city C H C B five seven seven eight eight A, block fourteen, lot nineteen, and C B five seven eight A, block fourteen, lot eighteen, respectively, from single-family district to A A, single-family district. Uh, before we bring up the uh, the applicant, I want to be able to sit time, a little time with Louis. Uh, Louis, come forward for a second, because some of the most basic questions um talk about single A to double A. That's something that everybody should understand under the rulings of Castle Hills. Can you explain the difference between A and double A?
Absolutely, absolutely. Good evening, everybody. My name is Louis Aberon. I'm the assistant to the city manager, development services manager, and I take care of these things. That's how you get your cases through me. Uh, I spend the majority of my time digging into the code, so I know this stuff. So I'm going to give you an overview of the difference between a single A and a double A. First of all, they're both single A districts. They are not multifamily. That's a completely different district. There are some differences between the two. Uh, the height of the building is the same, at thirty-five feet. We start getting into differences when we start getting into area regulations. In the single A, the front yard has to have a forty-foot front yard or twenty twenty percent of the depth of the lot. In a double A, which is being proposed, it's um twenty feet for a front yard. Correct, and it does not have a percentage, so it's set in a double A, twenty feet and a story. Uh, another difference is the side yard setback. In a single A, it's ten feet except on the corner, then it's twenty feet from the side street. In a double A, it's a five-foot setback from either side, unless you're on a corner, um, then it's twenty feet. It's a big difference.
And this property right now is on a corner or not?
Yes, yes, one of them is on a corner.
Twenty feet.
There are two properties and one of them is on a corner, that's correct. There is a side street. Uh, the minimum lot size is quite different. On a single A, the minimum lot size is fourteen thousand square feet. And on a double A, which is being proposed, it's seventy-five hundred square feet, so they are smaller lots. The uh, I think it's important to to, at this particular point, to go back a little bit in the code on each side and 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 tell you that in a single A and a double A, the minimum living area is eighteen hundred square foot in either district. So there there's no shrinkage in size requirements in a double A. Um, moving on, there is a difference between A and double A when it comes to impervious cover, something that the Board of Adjustment is quite familiar with. The single A does does say that only a third of the lot can be covered by impervious cover. In the rural residential, it's thirty-five percent. And in the double A, there is no verbiage having to do with impervious cover, so it allows for almost an entire footprint of house in a double A, if the builder so desires. Outside of that, it's the same. The parking requirements are the same. There's no parking in the front yard. I helped write that code. Uh, unless it's a semicircular driveway or driveway leading to a a garage, garage can be converted. That language holds. Also, the similarities is the addition to the fronts of the house, wherever the front is identified, obviously by address. You cannot build pass a front plane of the house in a single A, nor can you do that in a double A. So and to surmise, it's basically smaller lot sizes in a double A. The side setbacks are a little different, although in a corner, it's the same. Uh, and uh that is really about the only difference, other than this, like I said, not to beat the dead horse, but that the lot itself is is rather small. Size of the house on a minimum is the exact, there's some pretty striking similarities.
Thank you. So when you sent out the information in reference, once again, to the zoning change, it goes, what's the perimeter?
I'm sorry, sir, what was the question?
Perimeter, when you send out a zoning change for the for the
Five hundred feet from each corner of the of the property.
And so when you look at 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 the at the area today, um, so you you're so familiar with all the zoning that's taking place and all what is there today. The the closest double A zoning to where we are proposing today is where?
There isn't any. That, I think you're probably referring to across the street. There is a P U D, a planned unit development, which is vastly different than what's being proposed tonight. Uh, a plan, a a P U D is is a planned neighborhood, and we do have three of those. And that's probably the closest to the double A, but my zoning map doesn't show double As anywhere.
So when one speaks to continuity, there is nowhere on that street close by at all that double A exists today?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any questions to Louis for clarification? Just want to make sure again, we're level set before we start listening to the applicant. Nothing else, then the applicant. Yes, we'll we'll come back, we'll come back, we'll come back. But take that note down so you don't lose that thought. Um, the applicant, I I don't have anybody signed up, so I suppose it's the applicant coming first, Matt, um.
Mr. Snow. Chairman, you need to open the public hearing.
I thought I did.
See if there's anyone who wishes to speak during the public hearing. If if there is anyone speak, let them speak. When the everyone who wants to speak during the public hearing is finished, you can close the public hearing and move to four point two, which is the commission's discussion in action. Um, the applicant can speak during the public hearing if they wish, or they can speak at the beginning of four point two.
Yes, sir. I I thought I had opened up the the public hearing, but uh, okay, so officially, it's, I can't see that far, six forty-eight. Um, six forty-six, and we'll open the public hearing. And I read out the script, the script earlier. And so um, the public hearing is now open. I'd ask the applicants to come first and start it off so that we can then have discussion from the community about what they've heard and where they stand.
Great.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just going to do an introduction and I um
Who are, who are you, please?
I have six letters of support.
And you give me your your name and address.
My name is Suzette Cobb. I live at two ten Caladium Drive.
Okay.
And I would like to add the six letters of support I have.
We'll get them read. Yes, we hand them to the secretary. She'll she'll be fine.
I just want to thank you for your time and consideration. My name is Suzette Cobb. My family moved to Castle Hills in the late nineteen sixties. I've seen lots of changes over the years, and I stay because of the area and the community that I've grown to love. With that being said, I also see a new need for progress and change in our city. One that allows the opportunity for those residents like myself that wish to remain in Castle Hills, and one for those who would like to move to Castle Hills without maintaining a large lot. Addressing my zoning application, I believe my project is in alignment with the future image that our esteemed leaders, as well as our citizens and neighbors of Castle Hills have envisioned. I believe these changes are positive and a step in with and in step with the growth and the future of our city, while adding much-needed tax revenue. Next, I would like to introduce David Lewis, who is also a longtime resident and professional in Castle Hills, one who has lots of experience and is well-versed in matters such as this. Mr. Lewis will be helping with the presentation and will be able to answer any questions as well. Also, Mr. Paul Mathis with P and M Engineering, who has provided the feasibility study in regards to this particular project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, long time no see.
So I'm I'm David Lewis. I live at two twelve Hibiscus. Um, I've been, my family's been a resident of uh Castle Hills since nineteen fifty-nine. And this, I've been to so many forums like this, but not in Castle Hills in a zoning, I've been other cities. And I was always the outsider, see? So I was always coming here to pillage the the city and and leave. And, yeah, I know how hard your job is, because my father was on the zoning commission for ten years or thereabouts, and all I ever heard about was the Baptist church, this, or this, or that, and and I I know how hard it is for your job, so I'll try to keep this easy. Um, and one of the other things, I'll just go, this is a little bit humorous. Um, in the uh uh, development, uh, I'll just speed right here. Let's see, is that down or up? Side.
David, can you tell us what role you're playing today?
Uh, I I'm I'm speaking for Suzette, and I'm speaking for uh
You're a consultant, neighbor, friend, foe?
I'm a developer builder in in Castle Hills.
So you're advising the client, the applicant?
I'm advising, I'm advising the client.
We'll get with you, sir, in a second.
All right, so how do I go down this thing? Ah, there we go. Okay, so uh, I finally read the comprehensive plan.
Thank you for reading it.
Hundred eighty pages, and it's really, it's really fun to read. But one of the few humorous things I found in it, and that as far as the history of Castle Hills, is that my grandfather's in it, and you probably know why, but he was the one that had the casino on West Avenue. Tom Moore, and uh, it it's just humorous that there's a, basically a garden home or type of project around his old house, as there are a couple others in the area. Um. But anyway, the the, I mean, this study that was done, you had three aldermen, ex-mayor. You had about two hundred citizens, thousands of hours, lots of committees. And they put together a really comprehensive program, and I understand it is a vision. And what we're talking about tonight is kind of like the first step of a vision, because we got to get past zoning to be able to get to the actual building and bring the people in. Um, I'm going to get used to this sooner or later. This is why I I should have practiced, but I didn't have the opportunity. To the right, you said? Is it this right? You're pushing this. There, yeah, all right. God, these new gadgets, I can't help it. So anyway, I just think that the advisory committee did a wonderful job. I really want to thank them for all the work that they did. Um, it talked about housing diversity. And in Castle Hills, another story, my parents ended up in nursing homes their last days of their life. My, they're in the house I live in now. Uh, I tried to find them a piece of land to build them a senior-proofed house because theirs was far from senior-proof. My mother fell, broke her hip, never came back home. My father fell, broke his ankle. He spent his last days in a nursing home. I'm seventy-one. I don't want to end up in a nursing home, so I'm going to find one of these lots, as well as I think Suzette. Uh, I think this is a great opportunity for senior citizens to be able to find a place in Castle Hills, because right now there's just simply not. And we talk about our diversity, you're also talking about having the opportunities for young families to move in who don't have one point five million dollars to build a house, or buy one for seven hundred thousand and put two hundred thousand dollars in it. They don't have it. Um, so, yeah, we need diversity in housing. I don't know how you get it, but this would be a step. Demographics, can you read the slide? But basically, Castle Hills is like fifty-three percent senior and or no, forty-five, and the rest of the state's thirty-five. So we have a lot of elderly people in Castle Hills that will be looking for places to live. This is the suggested uh existing and proposed uh plat or zoning uh for Castle Hills. On the left, it's what it is today. On the right, you can see where the purple is and the green uh down West Avenue around Military Highway. Those are areas that they're suggesting that we do some kind of commercial or some kind of other type of of uh residential, which would be double A or or uh different. This is a plat that I did four years earlier. It's kind of hard to read, but the one on the left is all the sewers in Castle Hills. I was presenting something that was similar to this, and what I did, this is the map that I threw up by hand. The blue shows the areas that have sewer. Blue shows the areas that you could even put a double A community into. And in four years, almost all those have disappeared. South Winston became part of the rural district, one oh one uh Hibiscus got rebuilt. Um, a couple of houses over across from St. George have taken the place of those areas. Uh, there's a soccer field going in, was Danny Lane, which would have been an area maybe for garden homes. And all that's left that you can possibly put where sewer is, is West Avenue and Cremaria, this property. And maybe one over on Jackson Keller. Other than that, most of the pieces of land are too far in, no sewer, and don't have enough land to be able to divide anything into. These are areas that are in the vicinity that already have smaller homes, whether they're a pug or they're a garden home community or whatever they are, they're smaller lots. And they are in the same area, so it's not all these lots are, you know, point six acres, point seven acres. These are within walking distance, so it's not unlike the area. These are the two lots that are involved. They're in blue. Uh, one is on the West Avenue, Cremaria, and one's on Cremaria. This is a uh aerial of it, so kind of giving you a better idea of what it looks like. And right now, there's there's two older homes, one of which is probably going to have to be torn down. Both of those would have been very low-end rentals, of which it was recently, and the one low-end rental had to be evicted because they didn't make their payments on it. This is the proposed uh plat. This will change. And the neat thing about zoning is that you're basically giving me the first opportunity, or giving Suzette the first opportunity to even go to the next step. You can approve this to two A. And all the questions about drainage and trees and all these other things will come up on the plating process. This is more along lines of the commission trying to figure out what the best use and whether it's going to be detrimental to the community to make a change from one A to two A. Of course, you know that, but I'm just bringing that up with this plat. These are houses that are across the street. Um, that's on a small lot. Uh, we're hoping not to be anywhere near eight hundred thousand dollars for a house. This is another one. That one's closer to four fifty, five hundred, showing that you can build houses on small lots and have it be of a price range that a family could afford. I know that taxation's not exactly the reason why you make changes. But right now, we only have about seven hundred thousand dollars in tax base. And once this was to be approved all the way through the plat process, you'd be looking more like four point five million. And for the residents, worrying about whether your actual rate or your property value goes up. There's a a study that was done by uh one of our appraisers in San Antonio who will tell you that that's not going to happen. First off, it's so few, we're going to have seven or eight houses. And when you do comps, you only might find one of them that's listed in the comps, and it's just not going to change your values.
Plus, the the size is going to be, when you do comparables, it's not going to be comparable in size, obviously, right? The square footage is going to be much different. So when somebody does comps for for the reason of value, it's going to be definitely different, I understand. But you are, just officially, you're putting in eight new homes.
Well, that depends on plating process.
But this is what you're presenting to us today.
To have that chance.
So, but that's what you're presenting to us today?
Possibility, and maybe just be seven, because the the eighth one's kind of difficult to get in. Uh, and and these are, I've done many, many houses in a say, Alma Heights, it has fifty-foot by a hundred fifty-foot lots, other houses that have fifty-foot lots. There's a lot of areas in San Antonio that have fifty-foot wide lots. This is one that I built. This is one that I built. Uh, these are two that I built. You're not looking at lower-looking priced homes. You're not looking at lower looking priced homes. You're looking at nice homes. And they are probably going to run, you know, somewhere 550, 650 in that range. This is Blair Stover, who is the appraiser that had mentioned that it will not have a negative effect on property values. Because I know that's what people are concerned about. So I had him do a study the last time I did this and he basically came out and said, best use of the land and it's not going to affect property values.
This is your appraisal that you work, appraisal, appraiser that you work with?
For a similar, yeah, well, no, not actually. I, I use them for this project.
So he did the appraisal for the client?
Right. Well, actually, yes, he did an appraisal for the client. Absolutely.
Makes sense.
And it's a, I don't get to pick my appraiser, you know that. Yeah, and some of the benefits, we talked about, you know, it's having housing for other people. It will keep the neighborhood residential, which it could go commercial if you're not careful. This land right here could just as easily end up going commercial. It, it protects property values. And it, it kind of gives Castle Hills an uplift. Because you ask about the size of houses, there's a lot of 1800, 2000 square foot houses in that area. And these are going to be 2200, 2500 square feet just to be able for, you know, pay for a lot. You've got to have at least that much footage. So it's not as if we're building small houses and we're not building large houses. That's another breakdown. That was showing some of the sizes of the lots. And, and really, we haven't, we have not gotten that far. And I'm sure we'll have more questions and more restrictions and more ideas given if we get past this process.
So let me ask you a question, or the applicant. One of the things that I've always found a little difficult is when you're asking us to make a decision. And, and all the, there's still some variables out there that affect our decision. Simple question, eight or seven? It could be eight, could be seven. You, you talked about the flooding possibilities. Well, until you get to that level. How do you think we should make a decision when everything is not set? And how is the community supposed to respond when there's still variables about what it may or may not look like?
That's the reason why this isn't the last decision being made on this plat. Your decision is whether you feel, this is, when I read about zoning commissions, and I read up on zoning commissions quite a bit to make sure what the rules and what you should be thinking about, what you shouldn't be thinking about. And I know when I come to these, it doesn't make any difference. People bring up drainage, people bring up trees, they bring up traffic and they bring up all these things. And that's one of the reasons why we have Paul here, who has done a feasibility study for us already. And he can answer some of those questions. But to answer your question, no one is going to go to the $30,000, $50,000 worth of replating fees to try to figure out exactly where you're going to be. Especially since once you get out of here. I mean, this is easy for you. You're looking at the zoning, which really is the best use of it. And you have rules that you need to think about zoning. It does not include all those other things that you asked about. The next level, they'll ask all those questions. And just because we get a double A zoning does not mean we get to build garden homes. We might just have a double A zoning and have to go back and build single family again. This is the first step. And I also look at this as the first step with the comprehensive plan. This is like a test case. Someone spent thousands and thousands of hours and dollars and trying to figure out a way to make Castle Hills bloom. And it will. And this is just one of the pieces, one small piece of that. And I know there's going to be a lot of people, anytime I present anything, there's a lot of people who don't like it. But in this one, you bring me that sheet. The six letters that we got are contiguous.
They'll be reading, they'll, they'll be read soon.
But I want to show you where they are around the house.
Sure.
They are houses. It's the green. There are actually the people who live adjacent. And it's not all, I mean, there's a couple more here that are not adjacent. But usually it's like no one wants it. And I understand you couldn't possibly have a meeting like this about someone not wanting this. Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think you're correct, right? When you think about our responsibility, there's three words I look at, right? Compatibility, continuity, and best use. Make it four words. So when you look at that, that's, I just feel that it, there should be a little bit more substance. Right? Less variable before we start making a decision. But there's questions to be had. I know there's people in here that have questions. Any more of the presentation that you want to provide so that we can go straight to the continuation of the public hearing?
Yeah, no, I'm fine.
Thank you, sir.
If there's, if I could rebut anything?
Of course.
And Paul's here to answer any questions also.
Paul?
Thank you for your time. I'm sorry.
No problem.
I'm Paul Mathis with PM Engineering. And just looking at, you know, the, the difference between the A and the double A zoning. One of the things that we're looking at for this development is to actually provide, you know, rainwater harvesting and some sort of detention to offset, you know, the amount of impervious cover that's going in. Because we understand that, you know, there is a difference between the, the A and the double A. So we want to be aware of that. As well as with the lot layout, we were proposing like a 50 foot wide drainage. He's meant for additional drainage to be, you know, conveyed through the property. I know that there is a drainage project in the works and the design phase right now. And so we wanted to also be, you know, cognizant of that and be able to provide additional property and access off of Cremaria for any kind of maintenance and access to both the existing sanitary sewer main that runs through that part of the property as well as the, the storm drain as well.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
At, at this time, I will go ahead. We're still in the public hearing. So I know I had several hands stand up, sir. You want to, please raise your hand, come on forward. Your name, your address. And let's hear what, what say you?
Yeah, hi. My name is Victor Romo. I live at 200 Zornia. And I just wanted to, I saw the presentation and I wanted to know if Mr. Lewis and Paul, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name. If, if and how much financial interest they have in this project? Because we just heard a lot, but I want to know what the motivation is.
I asked if there was a consultant, so that would tell you the answer right there.
Yeah.
You know, and so.
Right.
But he is speaking on behalf of them. They're allowed to bring their team.
Right.
And so one would assume, as he mentioned about the other person, Mr. Lewis, also was paid to, for his services to provide his analysis.
And my, my second, my, I guess my comment on this is, where's the slippery slope here? You know, you make it double A. Where's that stop? You know? And, you know, I live in 200 Zornia, so I have businesses close to me.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Sure. I have businesses close to me, live at 200 Zornia. But you make that double A, where does the double A zoning stop? I mean, when's the next, you know, house or next lot that opens up? You know, who's going to come back, come in and try to take that over? And you already have precedent, you know?
Correct.
That's my, that's my concern.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, in the back. You had another comment? You want to come back again? Yes, ma'am. Now that you heard the presentation and that's what I wanted you to have, to understand what we're, we're considering.
I wanted to know if it's zone double A, what would be the maximum density that you could build on for double A?
What he, he also explained just to understand, the plating comes into place. Louis had explained to us the, the size of the lot that it can have. So you just have to do the mathematics to be able to see that. And I think there, that's why they're projecting seven or eight residences.
There is no code that are, no legal issue that would allow them to build more than that?
No, ma'am. It's going to be, I mean, I, I would assume that they're maxing out the space with eight. And so therefore there would be no other space to go to 10 or 11 because there's minimums for the size of the houses that we have to build.
I, I think it was interesting that it was pointed out there, there is not, no area of homes of this type in Castle Hills. The other supposed areas that were cited are different. They're larger. And the three comparables that were put up there in the blue, I couldn't see what that was. I don't know where those were. So that would be interesting to find out. I'd also like to know the addresses of the six support letters that were sent in.
Everything is public knowledge, just like your, your acknowledgement of your address and everything else. When the letters will be read, they will obviously be read with their address.
Thank you. And I'm sort of confused about what he says about the sewer. The rule is if you're not on the sewer, you get on the sewer. I guess it means that there's no main sewer line. So they would either have to pay a large amount of money for that or not have it. But you can't say I'm not going to build here because there's no sewer. There's no choice.
Correct.
But they, they're looking for a way that it's going to be less expensive for them. I can't see how you could put even seven, even six homes in that area and not have them be very crowded. I'd like to know if the 20 foot clearance in the front yard includes easement? Where you said the yard, front yard has to be 20 feet. Does that include the easement? Okay. Okay, okay. Thank you. And how do you get streets that go in to all those houses that it's not going to be congested? Some areas I've been in where they have how, homes built close together, smaller homes. You can't get two cars down the street at the same time. They're so narrow, the streets are so narrow. And I think that would be not, I mean, that's a fire hazard for one thing.
And, and we didn't, you're naming an address again, just for our record, name and address.
My name's Louise Ward. My address is 110 Cremaria.
And I just want to remind you that what we're looking at is best use, compatibility, continuity with the immediate area.
It's not compatible at all. It's totally different than.
You're entitled to your opinion. Thank you.
Well, maybe you just go look.
Yes, ma'am. And that's why we're here with the public hearing. Yes, yes, ma'am. You want to come forward? Thank you. Name, address, please.
Hi, my name's Julie Paulson. I have a bunch of aliases. I'm on 213 Carrollwood. We also purchased a property at 132 Cass Hills that we're restoring. An authentic mid-century modern home that will be our forever home.
Excellent.
My question is, there's no double A properties right now. When was that designation created and, and why? That's my first question.
That would be, Ryan?
That would be a Mr. Schnell from a historical perspective, as a previous zoning chairman. I'd probably say 1995, but.
I don't need, need to know exactly. I didn't know if it was a year ago for.
But it's a fair question. Why would you even do that, right?
Yeah. I mean, there must have been.
I don't think any of us were on the, maybe Skip was still alive back then, but I'm saying. That would be into the history of our zoning.
Just, you know, in general, why was the designation created? And why haven't there been any properties with that designation?
Our attorney will respond.
Secondly, I, I'm glad to respond when the public hearing is over.
Okay, we'll come back to your question.
And then my other one is, and, and I don't know at all the rules and regulations for short term and long term rentals in Castle Hills. Is it possible that all of these properties could be available for short and or long term rentals and not?
Louis, you want to answer that question?
And, and is that a plan among the developers? And then I'll sit down.
Yes, ma'am. He can answer your question in reference to the.
So I certainly can't speak to the plans of the developers. But we do have an ordinance that talks about density of short term rentals. It's one for every 12 on a street. So it depends on how, one of those addresses, well, it depends on how these new lots are addressed. But to answer your question directly, they, they couldn't all turn into short term rentals because it is a violation of density. Can they turn it to a short term rental? One, say for instance, there aren't any registered, that's the key word there, answered yes. But to be a short term rental community that, that flies in the face of the density that this particular board passed.
Correct. I, I think that, that this, when we talk about density is, it's per, it's per block, right? So if you have one already, you can't put another one. So that's the answer. So that's the way it works. Yes, ma'am. We triggered something else. Come on forward.
Much was mentioned about senior living, which I happen to be an authority on. So I'm curious if these homes will be especially amenable to seniors and those with neurological disorders, handicap and others? Or if that, or if that's just mentioned as a possibility?
I'm, I'm sure the, they haven't decided who's going to be occupying them at this time. There's too many variables to get into that, but it was just mentioned as a possibility. Yes, and that would be, that agreed, and that would go all the way down in the application process. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Vegas, you, you have something to come up again? Okay, perfect.
Hi, my name is Mary Schreider and I live at 101 Cremaria. I don't have any questions, but I have some comments. Is this the appropriate time to do that?
Please.
I have not spoken like this in a public forum. I have certainly voiced my concerns. Ryan and I know each other well, so I'm really grateful to, for you to listen to me. I'm not an expert or consultant or any of those, but I'm just here speaking from the heart. There are many reasons why I love it here in Castle Hills. I love it that I know most of my neighbors on my block and several surrounding blocks and that we look out for each other. I love that I chat with 93 year old Hall. Sorry, Ryan knows I cry too. I love that I chat with 93 year old Paul and his 11 year old stroke stricken dog, Wally, every morning. I love that I waved to Jessica as she drives the golf cart to her kids to school. And I love that this is where I purchased my first home 10 years ago from the original owners. Taking the money and the energy and the time to pick it apart where it was falling apart and to put it back together, its charm, its character and its history. Castle Hills is a sense of peace in the middle of a beautiful and bustling city of San Antonio. I love that our Castle Hills community is so small that we're able to have a voice. So thank you. That we can be here and respectfully listen to the needs of the entire community. I love that Bill Cobb, Suzette's dad, was my very first neighbor that I met. Bill walked up to me on the first day I was in the driveway of my Realtor and he said, hi, I'm Bill. I'm your nosy neighbor. Who are you? And if you know Bill, you know the exact marine tone which, which he uttered those sentences. But if you know Bill, you also know that every time I saw him after that in the eight years before his death, he gave me a hug every time I saw him. Asked me how I was doing, how the house was coming along. And he and his wife left me chocolates on my doorstep at Christmas time. Castle Hills is comprised of a bunch of properties, houses, people, businesses. But we love it here because of the community, because of the character and because of the aesthetics. Rezoning the property in question to commercial, which I know is not on this table at the moment. Rezoning the property in question to commercial would be a detriment to all of those things that we love about this place and the entire Castle Hills neighborhood and the small neighborhoods within Castle Hills. While rezoning it to double A is a lesser of two evils, chopping this acreage into eight smaller parcels does not benefit the entire community. It benefits the current owner, who I certainly respect. But it does not benefit the community. And unfortunately, it sets a precedent for chopping up every other property in the city. I'm glad that Suzette wants to stay here and live here. I like her. But she already owns three properties and houses in Castle Hills. She can stay here and she can enjoy this community without making any zoning changes to these two properties. This change doesn't go with the character, intentionality, or the aesthetic of Castle Hills. It goes against every reason that people love it here. The men, the mention that it bring, it could bring extra residents and therefore extra tall, extra tax dollar or tax dollars.
You're right.
Is negligible. In the past, there was a proposal to put a million and a half dollars of concrete in the creek and drainage bed. With that in mind, a few thousand or even several tens of thousands of extra tax dollars wouldn't solve any major budget issues within Castle Hills. It sets a precedent for chopping every other lot in the city. In this zoning request, as others have mentioned, it will, on the lots to be divided, they will also have to be cleared of most of the trees, which again is a detriment to our city. The properties in green, I just saw the paper really quickly. But to answer your question, the previous woman who spoke, just at, at quick glance, I can see that one of those properties is a mansion that faces West Ave. um, just at, at quick glance, I can see that one of those properties is a mansion that faces West Ave. Um, and so there's really no direct impact, um, um, to Nick and his family specifically. Um, three of the other properties on Cremaria are owned by the same family. So I can imagine how they would all have the same opinion, again, which I respect. I'm glad I'm able to share mine as well. Um, it will certainly benefit Suzette, which I re- I respect that that's, that's an important thing to develop your own property and, and your wealth. Um, but I do believe that it does benefit just Suzette and her developers or her partners who might be developing with her. I, um, hope and trust that the zoning commission is tasked with viewing the good of the entire commu- community and not any individual or individuals, including myself. This is just my opinion. So I hope that, um, the bigger picture is taken into consideration. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. I, I, I have the list. So, um, David already went, Ms. Jackson, you, anything else? Ms. Jackson? No. And then, okay, Justin, Mr. Vegas? And then Elena will be next.
Um, Justin Vegas, one of three premier, I live directly across the street. Uh, I guess this isn't going to go again, but the, um, I did read the, um, the comprehensive plan. And I did look through it and I saw that, uh, sorry, pretty sorry about that. I do not believe that the proposed change fits within the comprehensive plan. Uh, if you look at the map that he showed, uh, my understanding, this is both lots together. We're not seeing.
Correct.
Okay, so just based on that, I, I would assume that we would have to deny this based on this map where the Cremaria lot is not part of the so-called wall that the comprehensive plan talks about. Um, the plan talks about building a wall to protect the castle. So the inner homes, the bigger lots, the so-called essence of Castle Hills is the larger lots. And like someone else said, this is, could be a first domino. A lot of the families here, like they've been around since the sixty, seventies. They've been able to enjoy the larger lots. A lot of these families are now passing and these properties are being inherited. And I believe two of your siblings own the west. Owned by yourself now? Okay, the last time I talked to her, she said her sisters and brother were part owners of that, who don't live here anymore. And this is more money for them in their pockets if they develop it. Um, excuse me. The plan also talks about how you, with the committee, can change other areas. So if we want to do more building for smaller lots, there is the four-point-one acre lot on Northwest Military. There's a three-point-one acre lot just down the street from the proposed area. Um, and I assume since there's large buildings there, there's also sewer, so I don't assume that's a problem. Adding more homes, more stress to the city, uh, waste management, all those things. We still, I love about the cities that we have a garbage truck with guys jumping off this truck. Eight more homes, eight, sixteen more trashcans, you know, how's that gonna, that's more money that you're gonna have to pay out with this income coming in. So I don't think there's a net gain from the proposed tax. And again, this is all just numbers are throwing out. We don't know if these homes are going to be capped at five hundred thousand dollars to allow the so-called other families to come in. Who knows? You know, they could sell for one point one. If the market demands it, why not? Um, lastly, if this is going to be a test subject or the test run, I don't think the city has put in rules yet to maybe limit access. So I've talked to her. And Mr., I'm sorry, Ziga? Okay, Ziga. Um, according to Google Maps, that's his business. So like, he has access to West. So he's, he's not infiltrating the homes. I've talked to Suzette. I understand that what, uh, Castle Hills is changing. And I think on your map, on the, the west property, there's three homes that can go in front of the creek. So that right there, I mean, that's a, if you only allowed the three homes in front of the creek, they would only be limited at West and they wouldn't be infiltrating Cremaria. And that keeps your wall that the comprehensive plan talks about. So this is still, I think, zero to five years within the plan, and I don't know if there's been any discussion about how we can change those individual proposed lots for mixed use to only access West and not infiltrate the community. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Elena? Thank you for listening and being here tonight.
Elena Serna, one oh three Cremaria. I also live across the street from the proposed two lots that are, um, proposed to change tonight. Um, I echo really what Mary Schrader said. Um, this is a wonderful community. We have a six-year-old daughter that was born and raised here. Um, I, I think that when people talk about flooding and people talk about traffic, you know, we can speak not hypothetically, but very realistically. When it rains here and there's a heavy rain, Cobb Creek, named after Mr. Cobb, which is right there and runs right through these two, two proposed lots, it floods. This is one of the spots um, where when it rains, the police will come and put the flashing lights and the big signs that say you can't cross here. I cannot imagine how adding six, I'm sorry, eight homes from two to seven or eight homes is going to, the, the complications that come from that. Um, I understand there's an engineer involved. I understand there's a developer involved. And this is, I think, especially, you know, this is a, this is gainful for them and they're, um, they don't, I think, understand the impact of the people that live on this street. Um, it is not compatible and it is not, um, within, I think, the, the interest of, of the neighborhood. Um, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. You know the drill. Name, address.
Hi, my name is Vicky Burnett. I live at one oh six Mimosa Drive, which is one street over from Cremaria. In fact, Mary and I are backyard neighbors. Um, I just wanted to say, we've lived here since we moved in Christmas, well, New Year's Eve of nineteen eighty-six. So we've been here a long time, raised three kids here, love the community. I don't want to move. I love this place. Love the location. When people talk about if it's not developed into this garden home community, it's going to turn into a commercial property. This property is in a residential area of West Avenue. We have commercial property to one side. We have commercial property to the other side. But there's a long stretch in between of just residential homes. I can't imagine that any Castle Hills zoning commission would approve that plot of land for a commercial development. Can't be a convenience store. It's not big enough. Can't be office buildings. We're in a residential area. I think that threat is pretty much non-existent in the foreseeable future. You talk about compatibility. It's homes on larger lots in a quiet residential area. And I for one would like to see it remain that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Going once? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Joseph Quayar, I live at two zero five Zornia Drive. And I have to admit, I was not aware, uh, of this proposal until yesterday or the day before. Um, but I do, just from listening here, think that the, I just asked if the commission moved very cautiously before approving any zoning change and take whatever time is necessary to fully consider, uh, the ramifications based on the location. Based on the arguments that I've heard so far from Ms. Cobb and her team, uh, it sounds to me like basically any property along West Avenue that enters into one of the residential neighborhoods, uh, there's no reason why their reasons for developing those wouldn't apply equally there. And it just risks the op, the precedent of all along West Avenue and along Northwest Military, potential, those residential neighborhood roads. I don't see what's to stop that same argument from applying that those should also be rezoned and have the potential to have this garden home style development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. Yes. Say that again? Why, that's why I asked in the first place who you were here as. Um, yes, I, there's no reason you can, you want to change your hat and now be a resident, please.
I'm still David Lewis. Okay, anyway. Um, I just wanted to mention because people said we could just go anywhere and change the next lot and that lot, this lot and that lot. And you know, if we had sewer everywhere, maybe you could. But the infrastructure in Castle Hills is not, not allowing that. So that was the other thing. But, and then, uh, Castle Hills, unfortunately or fortunately, just passed a tree ordinance. So if I wanted to go clear cut some trees, let's see, a twenty-four-inch heritage tree would cost me about nine thousand dollars. When I did place lots, houses on the lots, you know, because I did do that. I didn't just go out and say, we're going to carve it up this way, you know, and it's going to be this. Uh, we put some things to it and tried to keep fewer driveways on West Avenue and stuff like that. But there's very few trees that have to come out, fortunately. And builders don't like taking trees down. It's expensive. Anyway, I just wanted to bring those two things up because I just think there's a few misconceptions.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and once again, um, the, the public hearing now at, um, seven thirty PM is closed. So now we'll go on to the discussion. Get my other paper out. Discussion, if possible, action on resolution two zero two five zero three zero four on a request from Suzanne Cobb for the rezoning of property located at six five one four West Avenue and one oh two Camara Drive, Castle Hills, Texas seventy-two one three, more particularly described as city, um, Castle Hills City Block five seven seven eight A, Block fourteen, Lot nineteen, and City Block five seven seven eight A, Block fourteen, Lot A, respectively, uh, from single A family district to double A single family district. At this time, the, the zoning commission will have its discussion and, uh, I'll need a motion to get things started. Anybody want to make?
Uh, close to my location, I live at three oh seven Zornia. Uh, I have recused myself from any vote on this motion.
Is that noted?
Yes, Mr. Jackson has filed a, uh, an affidavit with the city secretary um, that I have the original of. It's already been submitted by email to the city secretary. So Mr. Jackson would, would not be permitted by statute um, i- in participating in either the discussion or action on this item. Um, two points, though, um, I do not recall exactly when the double A district was, was created. I was on the zoning commission from roughly nineteen seventy-eight to roughly two thousand. Well, no, was more like, um, uh, nineteen eighty-eight to about two thousand ten or two thousand thirteen, chairman for about half that time. Um, I think the statement that was made by Mr. Zamron or Mr. Rapley that the double A district was created in about nineteen ninety-five sounds about right to me. But I don't remember the details. The city zoning map does show three areas with the garden home or the double A district. Uh, one of them is Castle Gardens, which is, um, Northwest Military, uh, near Northwest Military. It's on, off West Avenue between Northwest Military and Lock Hill Selma. Um, the other two are on the opposite side of the city, Lundblade Lane, which is just off of Blanco and a street I never heard of before that looks like Palm Circle. Thank you.
You've never heard of it and you've been on the zoning.
Yeah, well, we didn't have any zoning cases on that. So, so, you know, there, this, this would not be something that there's anything close by. But I did want to correct one comment that Mr. Zamron made and that one of the citizens repeated that there is no double A zoning. There is some property in the city, which is zone double A. Um, the proposed resolution, um, uh, you know, is just one option. It does not have to be, um, adopted. Um, any, uh, motion that the zoning commission makes is fine. Um, uh, you can either get a motion and then have discussion or you can have some discussion and then as things coalesce, there can be a motion. Um, but this is the commission's opportunity, um, to discuss among itself um, what it, the views of the four voting members of the commission this evening um, would be inclined to recommend to the city council. And it is important to make a recommendation to the city council. You've heard a lot this evening from both Ms. Cobb and Mr. Lewis um, on behalf of the applicant and from citizens. Um, so you have some time to work this through yourselves.
I appreciate it. I do want to make sure that the audience understand that we do provide a recommendation to the council. It doesn't pass here. The city council will take the final vote whether it passes or not. So this is just our recommendation after our discussion. So why don't we just have a discussion of where you stand? Yes, sir. I know.
Favor of this, uh, change in some, if you're, if you're a resident in Castle Hills and you're in favor, please put your hand up. Don't cheat if you're from out of town. Now, on the other side, those of you who are opposed to it, would you please raise your hand?
It's irrelevant, um, to me, whether people are here present are voting. I mean, we, we, it's our decision to make. Uh, I appreciate the input, but that's why we had to, well, that's why we had to public carry, so we could hear from themselves. And so.
Public hearing commentary, exactly whether you were in favor or not. So I thought it was important to ask the question.
I got you. Carlos? Oh, no, but yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If we open up to double A zoning and then that project alleged, this project falls through for whatever reason, does it stay as double A zoning? Does it open it up to some, to someone else coming in and just putting whatever they want on that land because it's double A?
Once it's designated as double A, it will maintain the zoning regardless of the name of the owner. So if another owner comes in, they still have to adhere to what Louis talked about in terms of size, setbacks, et cetera. So yes, it will retain it until another owner comes and has a request, just like this one is doing. Are there any comments? And let me take the lead. So, um, for me, I, I, after listening to everybody and I understood, as I said earlier, right, this is about best use, compatibility and continuity. When you look at the neighborhood, when you look at the adjacent houses, this does not comply with that in my estimation. From my estimation, I think what's important for us is to be able to protect, uh, the integrity of what, not only what we believe is neighbors, but what we also, we see. The compre- comprehensive plan does provide guidance, a vision of what could be. But it had a key word in there. It says a potential for this could be there. And the potential is really based on the us being able to evaluate ourselves with our experience, with our knowledge, and as us being neighbors too, to be able to see what we want to see. The opening up of this opportunity to be able to then look at the next project, the next project, to me, sets a precedent that I don't think we need to do. And from the possession that, uh, in, in, in the comments that I heard, whether it's five houses, six houses, to me, that was part of the thing also. The uncertainty of what it would look like, the, the lack of a pervious cover, right? There's none. Means you can just concrete it all over. That's a, that's a concern, right? Because what we don't know is the impact to the rest of the neighborhood. Once that's all, no longer be able to absorb any of the water, what happens then? So to me, rather than open up a door. So to me, rather than open up a door, a Pandora's box in my estimation, that then, once it's designated, we can't control or be able to give input to the next owner, the owner after that. I I'm gonna recommend in my, my motion will be that I move that we deny and and send the message with a recommendation to the council for their decision. And respectfully, they get to make the bigger decision. But I think we have to outlay the concerns that have been brought by the community. The concerns of the support and make sure that we get these letters read into the system, also, Mark, I need to be able to do that. I, how do we get these letters written that were submitted on behalf of the, of the, I wanna make sure we are fair.
There were letters attached to the application, those letters would already be in the record. I would ask the city secretary to check the envelopes that were given to her. And if there is a letter among those that is not in part of the applicant's package that's already in the record, then then we would suspend this portion of the discussion to allow Ms. Heinrich to read those into the record.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Cobb, do you know if there's a difference? We're already submitted. Okay, no problem, did we?
So why don't we ask Ms. Heinrich to read that into the record as as if it were part of the public hearing. But it will be part of the record for the city council. And maybe it will change someone's position, but it's important to hear all the the folks who want to speak to the zoning commission one way or another.
This is from John and Deborah Brettz on one oh four Cromeria Drive. This is a text message. And says, thanks for responding, excellent case for change. Our family has been here for seventy-five years. My father was counsel of record, part of the original group that shared a vision for privacy, minimal business intrusion, large private lots, minimum eight tenths of an acre per family, etc., etc. Especially no apartments. But times change. We understand and will cling to the past and if asked, we will support your vision. We have considered moving back to Austin Longhorn Village. Thanks again for letting us know your plan, miss your dad, be safe, John and Deborah.
Excellent, thank you.
Would you like me to read the response?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the address for that letter?
One oh four Cromeria Drive.
A response from whom, I thought it was, that was their message.
From Ms. Cobb.
Oh, no, I don't think we have to meet, it was just the gist was, thank you, Ms. Cobb. I'm sure she said, thank you. Would make sense. So gentlemen and or madam, my motion is that we we send the recommendation with a denial to the city council, I'll need a second.
A second.
Thank you, at that point, we have a motion and a second. Now we have discussion one more time, does anybody wanna speak to this question? Discussion, discussion, see no discussion? All those in favor of the recommendation, please signify and say nay? Aye.
Aye.
There are four ayes. Those opposed? Motion carries. It'll be forward with the recommendation of denial.
That'll be next Tuesday night.
Next Tuesday night is the meeting, you all will need to be ready for the next section, and that's your city council. Now we move on to item number four point three, discussion in the zoning ordinance provisions regarding massage establishments and regarding massage parlors, are we still gonna do that?
I think that Mr. McCormick had some questions that I might get back with, excuse me. Might have to clarify and get with Mr. Schnaw and then bring it back to the next zoning meeting.
What was that?
Question is whether or not the massage parlors or an application for massage parlor has an obligation to maintain a minimum distance from certain, certain other businesses like schools, churches, that sort of thing. And it appears that in fact they do. And the reason I bring for that is that the definition in section fifty point one of a sexually oriented business includes massage parlors. It has a whole long list of things. Adult this, adult that, adult theater, nudist this, nudist that, so forth and so on, sexual encounters and all that sort of thing. And massage parlors. So massage parlors have the same obligations as any other sexually oriented business. And those are laid out in fifty point four eight four location restrictions, which says any one, any one of the aforementioned residential uses A A A A A A A A and B, C, D districts all have these same restrictions. They have to be a thousand feet from any church, synagogue, mosque, or other religious worship facility used for primarily religious worship in a public or private elementary, secondary or high school, or any public park. And I think that was not considered when we first discussed this. And so it may be useful for Mr. Schnell to give us his opinion on it.
There there is, and the gentleman stopped and he asked me a question, so I didn't hear all of what you said, Mr. McCormick, and I if I missed something, please correct me. But when the the zoning commission and the council amended the zoning ordinance in chapter fifty in regard to the rules for massage, to add rules for massage establishments, there was a definition added to the zoning ordinance as to what a massage establishment was. And that definition is different from what a massage parlor is defined as. You are absolutely correct, a massage parlor is part of the definition of a sexually oriented business and must maintain all of those special restrictions that the city has put on a sexually oriented business, including, as you suggested, proximity to the residential districts, the A district, the double A district, the triple A district, the duplex districts, etc. But a massage establishment is not subject to those types of distance restrictions. It's my understanding, and I will defer to Mr. Zamron and Mr. Rapley about this, but it's my understanding that the businesses which have applied for and become part of the city of Castle Hills as massage establishments meet the criteria and the definition of a massage establishment and do not meet the definition of a massage parlor. The distinction involves one phrase, which is whether or not the activity of the business exposes or manipulates specified anatomical areas. And I am really not going to read into the record exactly what specified anatomical area is. But it's pretty obvious that they are the areas which you would see in a triple X establishment.
Do you happen to have handy the definition of a massage establishment?
I can read it to you, but it's ten line, nine lines long.
I I suggest, let's take, I mean, this is a words, I mean, obviously, your interpretation is not what is in the book, so the question is whether you wanna change that or not is a whole different story. So we can bring that up in a different, you can ask to bring it back up, that we just might as well change it, cuz if we're gonna play about shall or we or we or shall establishment versus parlor, you know, that's been already debated and that's the way it's written, the way it is. So I I I don't wanna spend tonight. Yeah, I mean, I.
I mean, it was directed months ago to have Mr. Zamron come back with the summary, but if there's some questions, then
we'll, we'll get it.
Mr. Schnaw to clarify those.
I mean, you heard his concern already, so it's basically the play on words. But that was adopted by the council, that was adopted by the zoning commission, that was already adopted. So it seems a little retroactive to all of us to come back and say, well, I didn't like the way it was interpreted back then.
Well, I I I think it's important that Mr. Zamron did provide, and I believe it's in the packet that was distributed to the zoning commission, kind of a summary of how we got from there to here. And I was trying to respond to the question and concern that Mr. McCormick raised. I do think, I do think it would be appropriate for us to perhaps have a separate meeting with Mr. McCormick to understand exactly his, what his concern is. And we can bring back to the commission a potential action item if that seems to be appropriate, and certainly can bring this back at your next, whenever your next zoning commission meeting is for further discussion.
I I think what Skip would.
We should table this.
Well, it's not an item, I mean, it's just a discussion item, so there's no need to table anything, I I think for me, what what you're coming at is the fact that when they, the caveat was what Mark outlined, right? They they had a definition of what a parlor was and what a massage establishment was. And so one meets one, one meets the other, and so you're seeing them as one and the same. And that's the difference, right? But they're not according to definition, right? So by the, by the rules, but anyway, so what y'all can have a meeting with Skip and go over it once again, but it's gonna be what you see in black and white today. It's not changing because of the delineation. At this time, it's seven fifty PM. I wanna, this will conclude, I need a motion to adjourn our zoning commission meeting. Carlos?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we have, we have a motion and a second for adjourn our meeting at seven fifty-one PM, thank you all very much, enjoyed our conversation. Ryan, congratulations.